Have you been following any of this?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, first of all, all this is for me. The state standards were adopted in 2019. This curriculum has come out and they are introducing it and reviewing it to see if it should be adapted.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Scott.
Mrs. Laramo.
Here.
Mr. Bennington.
Here.
Mrs. Eubank.
Yes, here.
Mrs. Gretchen, Mrs. Gretchen.
Here.
Mr. Pullman.
Here. At this time, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, welcome to the board. Welcome to the audience and those watching online. We welcome you to Perrysburg High School's Board of Education meeting. We care about our students, our faculty, and our staff. There are exit doors to your right and to your left, and also to my right. And there's an AED located right outside these doors to your right. You're located at 140 East Indiana Avenue. Again, thank you for joining us tonight here or online live. At this point, board, we'd like to adopt the proposed agenda. I'll need a motion to do so.
So moved.
Second.
That was Sue and Eric. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Laramo.
Yes.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank.
Yes.
Mrs. Downs.
Yes.
Mr. Pullman.
Yes, motion carries. Agenda is adopted. This is the time where we have public participation. And we encourage participation in our meetings and we welcome your comments. If you're interested in addressing the board at this time on an agenda item only, this is the time to do so. We ask that you preference your comments with your name, your address, your group affiliation. And comments are limited to two minutes as stipulated by our bylaws 0169.1. Also be aware that the board will not respond to you directly at the podium. You'll be responded through Mr. Hostler, Superintendent of Schools, or myself as President of the Board of Education. With that being said, if some information comes across, statistic, some data, the schools, that's not correct, we will immediately make sure that that is corrected through the advice of Superintendent Hostler or our treasurer. At this time, we have a list of folks who signed up. If you have planned to speak and you did not sign up, you have plenty of time to sign up before I start going through this list of people. You must sign up toward the back. Mrs. Price, are you back there? Okay, if they want to. I got everybody, okay. Our first speaker then, Mrs. Hess. And again, at two-minute mark, I'll tell you that's time and very politely, okay, thank you.
This is not an agenda item, is that okay?
You'll have to wait to the end of the meeting, yes. We have, again, public participation after we've had our meeting. Thank you. Miss Haiti, Christine Haiti? H-A-D-Y, yep.
Hi, Katie, yes, face masks, would that be considered part of the agenda?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Good evening, I'm here to implore you to make the logical decision of requiring face masks. Delta variant is far better at invading human cells than previous strains and leaves a higher concentration of the virus, 1,000 times higher in the back of the throat. This means that Delta is 200% more transmissible, infecting an average of eight people as opposed to two and a half. For the first five days of infection, the virus stays in the throat at the same levels of both vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals. It then drops for the vaccinated but stays for the same for the unvaccinated. Our children do not have an immunity wall. The majority of adolescents have not been exposed or vaccinated against COVID. As of July 22nd, over 4.1 million COVID pediatric cases have been reported, while the CDC estimates that the true burden in the U.S. is closer to 26,838,244. The British National Health Service reports approximately 7% to 8% of adolescents suffer from long COVID symptoms. There have been over 400 pediatric deaths reported since the beginning of the pandemic, and COVID is now listed as a top 10 cause of death for adolescents. Whose child will you write off as acceptable collateral damage? The fact is, masks work. Anyone that stands up here and tries to tell you otherwise is wrong. Masks exist as source control and are effective with widespread usage. Because of the highly contagious nature of COVID, this means that everyone should be masked to reduce transmission as children spread COVID just as effectively as adults. The risk of breakthrough infections by the variant in vaccinated people rise with increased exposure, like schools. Widespread cessation of practical mitigation measures is what brought us to this point. Have we learned nothing from our past mistakes? If there are parents out there who are afraid of masking their children, they are free to withdraw their students from the district and homeschool instead. I believe they would consider this personal responsibility. It's infuriating to have to stand here in an incredibly privileged community and advocate to grown adults we elect and entrust our students' safety and education for simple measures to keep ourselves safe. Making these decisions while the selfish and misinformed bombard you is not easy, but you asked for this job. Schools teach children to be scientifically literate, yet here is an opportunity to put that into practice and it becomes a debate? Make sense.
Excuse me, that is time, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Graves.
My name is Sean Graves. I'm at 309 West South Boundary Street here in Perrysburg. I'm grateful for this opportunity. I'd like to address masks. One of your stated core values is to provide a safe and inclusive environment for our children, and quite reasonably so. By now, we know that masks work. The American Academy of Pediatrics is very clear on this in urging universal masking in our schools. So let's not fool ourselves. If you really want to protect the health, safety, and well-being of our children in your schools, you mandate it. You don't strongly recommend no smoking in buildings, you mandate it. You don't strongly recommend immunizations, you mandate it. You don't strongly recommend no hate speech, you mandate it. You don't strongly recommend wearing shoes, you mandate it. Goodness, Perrysburg Schools doesn't even just strongly recommend no hats, spaghetti straps, or slippers, you mandate it. Universal mask-wearing clearly matters much more to the health, safety, and well-being and educational environment of our students than not wearing slippers or spaghetti straps to school. Yet you mandate no slippers or spaghetti straps while merely strongly recommending universal masking in the midst of an escalating pandemic. That doesn't seem to make sense. Faculty-staff vaccination rates are beside the point, commendable and necessary, but beside the point. They're a small part of the school community. And our children are sitting next to and hanging out with their friends in the school buildings, not the faculty and staff, as wonderful as they are. By your board policies, you prohibit student dress practices when they present a hazard to the health or safety of the student or to others in the school. Not wearing a mask is clearly a hazard to others. Teachers easily monitor dress code violations. If they can enforce the prohibition against spaghetti straps, they can easily enforce mask-wearing. BGSU mandated universal masking, and so does the city of Perrysburg. Why not Perrysburg Schools?
Thank you. Lori Reford, please. We'd ask that you just not respond either way so we can continue with the speakers. Lori? Reford, pardon?
Not agenda item.
Not agenda item, okay. Remind me to come back to you, I'm gonna put a star there. Danielle Lang?
I'm Danielle Lang. I'm a resident here in Perrysburg. Well, we as a community have split views on mask-wearing. I think the majority of parents can agree we want a more normal school year and would like to see our kids in school for five days a week. However, this isn't obtainable without putting safety measures in place. And this includes mask-wearing, which has been strongly recommended by both the CDC and the AAP. We are starting to witness other states and communities making masks optional. Many of these schools have had close, have had to close or quarantine large groups of students and teachers due to the rapid spread of COVID. These schools are now only entering their second or third week. Our community isn't immune to this. We need to start being proactive in regard to our numbers and not reactive. I think we learned these last 18 months that implementing safety measures based on these numbers alone has caused further spread because it's often too late. We have students in this district that are immunocompromised. We also have students going home to immunocompromised loved ones. The majority of our students aren't even eligible to have the option of a vaccine. I think this is our chance now, before the first day, to help give our students, teachers, and other staff members the best chance of having a healthy and more normal school year.
Thank you, Danielle. Andy Bucher?
Oh, we get gifts. Thank you, my goodness.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He gave one to the treasurer, just grab that.
I don't know, I'm new at this.
You're doing well.
First time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Andrew Bucher. I live at 26029 Seminary Road here in Perrysburg. I'm a father of five. My oldest just finished up sixth grade at HPI. I'm not a doctor. I have a strong science background with a degree from the University of Toledo College of Pharmacy, but I am a lawyer, and a practicing lawyer. And I'd like to commend the school board on its current choice to allow families to choose what is to be done and what's in the best interest of their children. And the reason why I commend you for that is because autonomy over one's body and especially autonomy over one's children is a fundamental right in the United States. And for the government to infringe upon a fundamental right, there's a very high burden, a very high evidentiary burden which must be cleared. And when I went and looked at the recommendation, the non-binding recommendation from Wood County and their website to see what they offered to substantiate that, there was nothing. Their guidance was just their plan. There was no evidence. So even in an evidentiary sense or in a burden-shifting sense, families who want to have the choice as to whether or not they mask their children shouldn't have to present any evidence. I'm going to go ahead and do so in lieu of the county doing the same. So how serious is this? Well, total COVID deaths among children through the entire period of COVID is less than the number of COVID deaths through the 2018 and 2019 flu season. And that was an intermediate flu season pursuant to the CDC. The first handout you have overview Sweden, where they have 1.95 million children. There were no masks and schools were open the entire time. 15 children went to the ICU. And despite many of them having leukemia and chronic kidney disease, none died. Your next handout is a breakdown of all 14 of the major studies on mask-wearing. And the net result is, there's no proof that masks work. The CDC's own study is the next handout. And the conclusion there was no significant effect preventing the spread of COVID due to masking. The next is the National Academy Press, Science and Engineering Medicine, where there was no statistical evidence to show that cloth masking works at all. The following handout is the Stanford study. And not only did they find that cloth masking didn't work, they found that it was actually negative.
Andy, it's, that's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Winters, please, Laura Winters.
I'm Laura Winters. I live at 1992 Horseshoe Bend Drive in Perrysburg, so hello. I am here today because I would like to express my opinion to keep masks optional. When COVID first started, I lived in a constant state of fear. As more information came out, my fear dissipated. Our family exercises, eats healthy food, and supports our mental health and immune system. So when we got COVID in May of this year, we were educated and prepared. Our family had COVID, and now my five-year-old son, starting kindergarten, has antibodies to protect him. COVID is approximately .6 to 1.4 microns in size, and therefore cloth and surgical masks do not protect against these fine particles. If we were talking about fit-tested N95s, then that would be a different story. What I am concerned about is that my son's social, emotional development will be affected. No one will be able to see when he's elated, scared, nervous, or hurting inside. We pick up on so many social cues through our facial expression, and I fear as our children's heads dive deeper into technology and now faces covered, that they will lose their ability to fully connect in person with each other. We, as parents, make hard decisions every day, like standing up and talking right now. Please let us make the decision to mask or unmask our children.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Michael Bauer.
Michael Bauer, 1318 Tricia Court. I want to read a story. "As my friend was passing the elephants, he suddenly stopped, confused by the fact that these huge creatures were being held by only a small rope tied to their front leg. No chains, no cages. It was obvious that the elephants could at any time break away from the ropes they were tied to, but for some reason, they did not. My friend saw a trainer nearby and asked why these beautiful, magnificent animals just stood there and made no attempt to get away. 'Well,' he said, 'when they're very young and much smaller, we use the same size of rope to tie them, and at that age, it's enough to hold them. As they grow up, they're conditioned to believe they cannot break away. They believe the rope can still hold them, so they never try to break free.' My friend was amazed. These animals could at any time break free from their bonds, but because they believed they couldn't, they were stuck right where they were. You see this mask? This mask is our kid's rope. If we tie them down now with the fear of COVID or with the fear that a classmate or a teacher or a friend could potentially have COVID, they may never psychologically recover. Especially the youngest of our children. I have one that's 15 months old and another on the way. They're the most impressionable with the least amount of real-world experience to offset the conditioning of mask-wearing. We're raising an entire generation of children who are being taught to live their life in fear, and for what? 20 in a thousand? 20 in 10,000? 20 in 100,000? No, 20 in a million. .002%. That is the CDC's most up-to-date estimated infection fatality ratio for kids age 0 to 17, 0.002%. Statistically, a child that age living in Ohio is four times more likely to die in a car accident in any given year and three times more likely to get struck by lightning over the course of their lifetime. Do we fret about putting them in a vehicle every day? No. Are we concerned about sending them outside to play? No. So why are we even contemplating treating the COVID risk any differently? Let's follow the lead of the people who know these kids best. Not the Perrysburg School Board or the most vocal bots on Twitter, and definitely not a handful of unelected CDC bureaucrats, but the parents. Let the parents decide. I'll decide for my kids, you can decide for yours. If you want your kids to learn to live in fear, constantly concealing their emotions behind a piece of cloth, that's your choice. But don't impose that on the rest of us, because that's not what we want. And it's clear as day. Just step food, just step foot inside Meyer or Costco for a second, pull that mask off from over your face and open up your eyes. You'll see that while you're in here deliberating over mask mandates, the rest of us are out there living. And who knows? If you pull that mask down, you might even get a smile or two.
Thank you. Emily Conley? Emily Conley? Brian Booz?
What name did you say?
Emily Conley. Is this on? I'm sorry, they're clapping, I know. Emily Conley, there you go, Mrs. Conley. Sorry, Brian.
Oh, you're fine, sorry about that. My name is Emily Conley, 246 West Second Street. I would like to also encourage the school board to continue with their plan to recommend, but not require, masking for students. In a recent study about the effectiveness of masks for children, Dr. McCary of Johns Hopkins stated that they were only able to find one study on the question and its results were inconclusive. Even without that data, the CDC sternly decreed that 56 million U.S. children, adolescents, regardless of vaccination status, should wear a mask. Another study by the Health Information and Quality Authority of Ireland studied masks and decided there was no benefit. Transmission of COVID was low in schools, and young children found it difficult to wear the mask covering face properly. In addition, the mask had adverse psychological impacts, including anxiety inhibiting development of communication skills. As a reading teacher at Frank School, I believe our students cope pretty well with the mask for the most part. They did not seem to struggle with the social difficulties of the mask like the secondary students did. However, the masks were handled improperly, touched frequently, and worn inadequately despite our best efforts. In addition, the majority of my students' masks were filthy. I frequently would give students clean masks because theirs were covered with food, saliva, and sweat. One little girl sneezed into her mask, and I had to plead with her to take it off so I could give her a clean one. She was afraid to take off her mask, even though it was horribly filthy. In no other situation would any loving adult require a child to wear a contaminated mask like this. I do not need a study to tell me that these masks were unhealthy for these little children. While secondary students might not struggle with sneezing in their mask or wearing a visibly filthy mask, the sense of isolation that they experienced was overwhelming. It should come as no surprise that deaths from suicide were higher than deaths from COVID. My son's high school experience last year was lonely and stressful. There is no doubt that parents on both sides of this issue love their children and want the best for them. I do not want to send my son to high school without a mask because I do not care about his friends or his teachers or his health. I care deeply about these issues, and I have come to the conclusion that masking is not the right choice for my son at this point. I also realize that parents are in favor of mandatory masking, have evaluated the risk, and come to the conclusion that preventing COVID transmission outweighs any disadvantage to mask-wearing for their child. We can exchange statistics all evening and quote expert opinions that fit our different narratives, but we will still be at a standoff. So in closing, I would like to respectfully ask the board to step back from the restrictive policymaking that was necessary last year.
That is time, Ms. Emily.
Allow each family to perform their own analysis, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Brian? Brian.
I am also urging the board to continue.
Address, address.
Oh, yes. Brian Boos, 3233 Sterlingwood Lane. I have a six-year-old daughter starting first grade and a four-year-old son starting his second year of preschool. I am also urging the board to allow parents to make the choice that is in the best interest of their children's health. There are approximately 100 people in this room tonight. Many of us are not wearing masks. To those that are, that's great. We've all made a choice that is in the best interest of our own personal health, what we believe to be in the best interest of our health. Why would this board vote to take away a parent's choice for what is in the best interest of the health and development of their child? We talk about masks work. We've heard a person matter-of-factly state masks work and that's undisputed. Dr. Fauci, in a February 2020 email, stated masks are really for infected people to prevent them from spreading infection to people who are not in fact infected, rather than protecting uninfected people from acquiring infection. The typical mask you buy in the drugstore is not really effective in keeping out the virus. So yes, there is not, there is a lot we do not know with respect to masks and their efficacy. We also do not know the long-term effects. We heard a great account from a teacher just now. How will this affect students in two years? My daughter will now be starting her second year, full year school, potentially being required to wear a mask at a critical time of her learning to read, write, expand on her skills to communicate. How is that going to affect her in two years, three years, four years? You don't know. So I encourage everybody in here, I encourage the board, do not mandate masks. I would note, two members of this board are on the ballot in November, and if you feel the same way I do.
Brian, Brian, that's, that's not appropriate at this point.
And if you feel the same way I do, you can express your choice in November. So pay close attention to how they vote tonight.
That's time.
On your children's health and wellbeing.
Thank you. That's all the speakers we have tonight, board. We thank you all that stood up and spoke your piece and there'll be some discussion on COVID and I'm sure maybe some discussion on masks and we'll go from there. You're welcome to stay the entire, entire meeting. And at this point, we're going to go to the super tennis report.
Thank you. So we have two items for the super tennis report. The first is the public, annual public opinion survey, something that we put out to residents each year, and we're very excited to share the results of that. So with that, I'll ask Rachel Zickert to come and, and share the results of that survey.
All right. Just wanted to make sure it was working before.
Can they turn up the mics on the front? Is your mics on?
Yeah.
You have to lean forward too much to speak. Brooke, can we have these mics turned on a little louder?
They should all be on.
Are they? Yeah, okay. You have to lean forward so much for the folks to hear us, so, okay.
All right. Thank you, Rachel. Appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, thanks so much for having me up to talk about our public opinion survey report. This is the eighth time we've conducted this survey. The first time was in 2012. It was basically after we did two years, we took a year off to see how much the, you know, points moved. We decided to continue to do it each year, but then last year due to COVID, we did not conduct the survey. Initially, we just wanted to make data-driven decisions in areas where there wasn't much data available. So for an example, we added a printed newsletter several years ago because we measured in the survey and citizens were asking for one. So we just wanted to be able to keep things in perspective and to hear from, you know, the entire community as best we could. So who was contacted? The, this was mailed to a random sample of active voters in June, so we get a, a nice list from the, the Board of Elections of everybody they consider an active voter and we take a random sample from that. I won't do PowerPoint karaoke, you can see where the notes are there. So overall, how are we doing? You know, we asked the respondents, suppose Perrysburg schools were graded like students in our school district. Based on your impressions and experiences, what would you say the district's overall grade should be? So you can see 60% gave us an A, 24% B, 6% C, 2% D. And seven skipped the question. The only required question was the first one that asked what their role was. So some people felt more comfortable answering questions depending on their knowledge of the district, so we didn't require answers. So the changes from 2019, you can see reduction in A. Bs, you know, you can see it's picking up the points and slightly more people skipped the question this year than previously. So we're not just talking to parents. This is something, you know, through my role as the communications director, you know, we, we always feel like it's, it's really important to make sure that we're, when we're communicating directly to families, you know, we know we're talking just to parents, but when we're talking to the entire community, 73% of the respondents to the survey don't have that direct connection as being a parent or guardian of a current student in the school district. The educational attainment, 72% of active voters have a bachelor's degree or higher. And then you can see how long respondents have lived in the school district. Lots of longevity in this community, even for all of our growth. And then how do citizens obtain information about Perrysburg schools? The Perrysburg Messenger Journal continues to be Perrysburg schools' top tool to reach our community. There wasn't a lot of movement on any of these over the previous survey. So we ask people where they currently get information and then we also ask what modes they prefer we use. In fact, this was how we tested an email newsletter and a printed newsletter before we offered them and we, we added those things because in the survey, people said they wanted us to do those. So we like to justify whether it's the opportunity cost or the actual physical cost of these things, that we, we added them because we saw there was a demand for it. We like to measure, we've been measuring lately, you know, how familiar folks are with Perrysburg Schools Foundation, just to see how good of a job we're doing in getting the word out there about that to the general community. And then we talked about this in our communications committee, you know, finding out, you know, how many people tuned in to our events this year, because a lot more events were, you know, shared online this year. So we wanted to see kind of how many people were taking advantage of that, including our, our board meetings. How well do you feel the school district handled the pandemic? Again, in our communications committee, we talked about measuring this and finding out how people felt about how we handled this, this unfortunate situation. The area perceived as the school district's greatest strength, academic college prep, this is the same as previous survey. Same thing with the greatest challenge still, growth size. By a wide margin, actually, that was always the top response. So in summary, you know, stakeholders generally, you know, there's a strong value of the local school district. You know, we, we want to continue to, you know, keep this data. I think it's very helpful for making data-driven decisions. We, we have a lot of academic data, but we found, you know, as far as our, our grounds and our communications, there's not, you know, a bunch of data out there for those things. So we're going to keep trying to find additional ways, communicate to get information out there, and we'd like to continue the study annually, just to measure, continue to measure our progress. There's a full report on our website. It's linked on the board agenda, it's also on the communications page. So for the fellow nerdy numbers people, there's, there's tons of fun in there.
Lot of good information here, for sure.
Is there, Rachel, is there really a need since our numbers were kind of consistent? Do you feel there's a need to do it again next year or is it relevant to maybe skip a year for next year? We seem to be standing, I mean, who knows what this year's going to be like? Maybe we have to wait to see if we want to send it out again and I'm totally cool with that.
Yeah, I, I, I'd like to continue to do it annually. It's because we do, you know, everything internally, it's not a, it's not a huge cost and, and all the costs are listed in the report. But, you know, there was, there was quite a bit of, you know, not a quite a bit of movement, but there was movement over, you know, two years ago and a lot has happened in the world. A lot continues to happen in the world. It's, it's kind of nice because, you know, because we did the survey, we were also able to ask about COVID in our online events and things like that. So a lot of the questions are longitudinal, but it is nice to also be able to ask those additional questions. So I would like to see us do it again if, if, if there's support for that. It's certainly helpful to me and the communications department.
Rachel, was there any reason why, question 13, why so many skipped it? Why, why would someone skip, 103 folks would skip that question?
Which one's 13? I'm sorry.
The district's greatest challenge.
Oh, well, I mean, I don't want to characterize.
That's the question that was skipped a lot.
Probably because you have to write it in. It's not a, check a box.
Is it a write-in?
Kelly, that's a good point. Yeah, so, yeah, the last, the last three questions.
On the last page.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, so it's a write-in the blank instead of, you know, a checkbox. But also, you know, we, we, you know, we tell them in the cover letter and at the beginning of the survey that if they feel like something doesn't pertain to them or they don't feel like they have an opinion, I mean, it is a public opinion survey, so if they don't have an opinion on something, that's why we, we try to only require that first question so that, you know, we can calculate like the response rate and everything. But, but other than that, people were free to skip. And it was kind of interesting, there's a small amount of movement, but, you know, which questions get skipped kind of changes a little bit over time, too. It's interesting.
Well, and that growth, that growth in size has been along the board since 19, 2019, 2018.
Yeah.
And it's interesting how the percentage shows when it comes down to COVID-related, which we've been talking about all year, 2%, but 103 people skipped that question. Interesting.
Is, is there any way that we can increase the response? I remember you saying in committee that a 20% return is not bad. It's kind of standard. I think that's sad that you send out 2,000-plus surveys for people to give us feedback and only 400 return them. Is there, is there any idea why so few people will respond to that?
It has fluctuated. We do, you know, part of the, the biggest cost of the survey is actually the, the paid return envelope. And that actually does, you know, there's data behind that that does help your response rate. In fact, you know, I think 20 to 30% response rate, we're kind of in that window. I mean, I wish, I'm with you, I wish we had a 100% response rate. But I think that's something we can continue to, to look at, to see if there's other ways we can try to get that, that rate up there. But I will say that we did receive enough response that I feel like, you know, we got a good measurement.
It's been pretty consistent over the years, hasn't it? Right around that 20% mark.
I'd say it's like 25 plus or minus. It, it has fluctuated a little bit.
Does seem a little bit low, but I know this year anyway, but as we've talked about in the past, 20%, 25%, here I go acting, you know, talking about statistics, but that's a statistically viable survey.
Yeah.
At that rate, 20%.
Well, it gives you enough information for the district leaders to, to look into things that need to improve or change or, you know, so I think the 400 that respond is, it's, it's a good number. And statistically, there's a good number. It depends upon your confidence level, you know, where you, where you want to be, 95% in the accuracy. So it's good work, good information.
Yeah, and I think it also helps with making decisions about how people are reached because we have some segment of the community that likes the direct mail and, and we have others that totally like electronically. So if you listen just to the electronic folks or saying, why are you spending money on this? There's a whole block of people that we're hearing from and now we have data to support different modes of connecting with the community. Because our, our most important thing that we do here is, is again, communicating information to the, to the residents. And, and it really allows us to dial in, you know, and, and there's other details in the, the data, so we can even pinpoint different age groups and things like that. So it is helpful because it allows us to be more direct with the funds that we're using when we do communicate and how we communicate and making sure we're trying to collect all the voices. Because it's very easy to say, you know, everyone has a cell phone, let's just do that. And clearly, that's not what the survey shows.
Yeah, we try to add layers with communication and to get more mileage out of the things that we do. So when we do the direct mail piece, we also, you know, email out about it, we post about it on social media, it is posted on the website, you know. But there's definitely a segment out there that, you know, print is just absolutely still a big component, whether you're talking about the importance of the Messenger Journal or you're talking about the importance of a printed newsletter. It's definitely if we, you know, our responsibility to make sure that we're sharing information about the district, you know, that if we want to reach, try to, I mean, you can't reach everyone, but if we want to try to reach everyone, those are important components.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So next on the agenda is just a, a back-to-school plan update. And as, as you know, there's no agenda item where we're asking the board or making a recommendation to the board to change anything since we last met. So we just wanted to share that this is, this is an update. And certainly based on information presented, the board has the right to make any changes that, that it feels necessary based on the information that we're presenting. But I just wanted to clarify that. So I want to begin with vaccination rates for our community. I think that, that is something that is, is really good news. As of, you know, the source is the Wood County Health Department who recently said, of those who are eligible, 79%, over 79% have received at least one dose of the vaccine, so they're on their way. And, and that is very helpful to us as we'll kind of get into the numbers and, and how there's kind of a ripple effect when a COVID case does appear in the district. Because everything that we do and what we highlight here today is solely for the keeping students in school and that's our most important factor. And, and the approach that we use calls on several different ways to make that possible. Masks are just one of the many tools that we use to try to keep schools open and kids learning face-to-face because ultimately that's our goal. So the guidance, since we last met, Perrysburg Schools strongly recommends that everyone, especially those who are unvaccinated, wear masks while in school. And, and so with this guidance, you can see that there are certain situations where we're asking folks to wear masks. And so looking at this, we're talking about assemblies and pep rallies, putting 400 kids in the bleachers together. In other types of situations, we're asking that mask be worn during those times. And, and we get into some of the details in terms of what we do. We also know that contact tracing is going to revert back to the school district and we'll talk more about what that means actually to us and, and the tasks that we have to do with the new guidelines from ODH and then, and then how Wood County is implementing those. Because it does have a, a factor in terms of how we're going to operate in the future. It's really important that we still have families do many of the practices that we started last year. Again, there's, it's kind of a layered approach to what we do. So there's no magic bullet for any one particular thing because if we did that, then we'd be doing that all the time. So it's a combination of things and families are asked to continue to do a wellness check, including temperatures, making sure that they're communicating and talking to their child about what, how they're feeling and what are those signs and symptoms that could be related to COVID. And we also ask that of our employees. We had that time where, where our staff here does a great job and, and if you're not feeling well and maybe you're 65%, you're getting out of bed and you're coming to, to work. And, and at time, that was part of our culture. And so it's been challenging for us over the last year to kind of say to people that if you're feeling that way, the best thing that you can do is stay home. Because we've had too many cases that have impacted students where the teachers are there, they're, they're not feeling well last year and, you know, they end up having COVID and then everybody, the contact tracing, everybody I had contact with them has to go home and stay home. So, so those are the kinds of things that we've really been stressing and I think that's been very helpful. that's been very helpful to do that. And we do have the website that, our email address, COVID Support. So if you are a family and you do have somebody with COVID, or your child has to quarantine, to please let us know so that we can begin to, to do the contact tracing on behalf of the, the county and, and the state of Ohio. And again, I can't stress it enough, if you're sick or not feeling well, stay home. And we had a case, this, before school began, right as teachers were reporting, where we had a staff member who didn't feel well, stayed home, and they were COVID positive. If that staff member would have made the decision and said, you know what, I'm about 75% today, I'm going to go ahead and go in, that could have had an impact with students being able to start school with staff members, or getting on a bus and, and those kinds of things. So the things that we're doing is trying to keep school open and, and operating. Travel out of the country, we do have people that do question that, and, and there are some guidelines, we won't go through those today, but it's really important to understand that if that is going to happen, there are guidelines that you need to follow in, in returning to the country and then returning to Wood County. So I want to kind of pivot and get into what's been happening, you know, in our community. And, and we, we really want to focus on, and I think it served us well last year, when we spent a lot of time last year talking about what was happening in our buildings, what was happening between students and staff. And every board meeting that we had, we had a COVID update for a while until about the end of April. And we talked about the exact numbers and things that were happening, because it was important for people to see what was taking place in, in our walls here. So I want to go through some of the, the data points that are relative to us as we move forward. So backing up to July 26th, Wood County Health Department reported, and this is a, a, a window that they report, the two week period, that there were eight new cases of COVID in that two week period in, in Wood County. And, and we talked about that at, at the next board meeting, and we said that, that is a very good thing. So when you couple with the low incident rates that we have, with the, the high vaccination rate that we have, that is, that means that there isn't a lot of community spread. And if it does spread, it's not going to take a foothold like it did last November and December. And, and so that was very positive. So we updated this at the next board meeting on July 29th, where we had 32 new cases now in that window. So we've moved from eight to 32. Again, we're talking about a, a large area, and, and it's, it's increasing, but still, it's, it's a lower number for us and, and what we're doing. But it's one day, you know, this one sample of, of, and then two weeks later, there's a new number. Does that mean it's a trend? Or is this something that we'll see this move up and down? Because last year, we saw those kind of movements. So for us, in, in August 12th, the most updated one saw us move from 68. So, so going back through that history here, we've gone from eight, which is, which is a very good number, to 32, which is, this is again, per 100,000, and, and now we're at 68. The levels for transmission set, set up by the state here, and, and the, you know, there's two different categories that contribute to this. But on Saturday, Wood County, Lucas County moved to high transmission. So we were in substantial, which was orange, and we moved to high. So that's something that happens since we were last together, in terms of what we're doing. And again, this is important to give us kind of perspective. This is from March, 22nd of March, and you can see on the very, if you're looking at this at the far right, a few cases reported. And then you can see it, you know, per week, and you can begin to see it pick up. And, and we've talked about that November and, and January, December, that window there, where things were really the worst here in terms of the numbers and cases that we were experiencing. And, and you can see where we were as school began, you know, with August 20th. And, and you saw these, these ups and downs. So we began the school year with cases, and then a week or two later, we, there was a dip. And, and so that's important to us, but then all of a sudden, we saw this acceleration. So you can see in the far right-hand corner, where all of a sudden, after many weeks, the summer of relatively nothing, we're starting to see things pick up here in, in Wood County in the terms of number of cases. But perspective, looking at where we've been, it's, it's not nearly where as high as it was. But again, is this where we were, and if we're going to follow the same blueprint where we were back in August? We, we know that we're concerned, you know, as people move indoors and, and that, the difference is, of course, people are vaccinated, whereas last year, they weren't. And last year, there was a mask mandate in place, and that was one of the many layers of things, alternating days for students. There were many of those kinds of safeguards put in place to try to reduce spread. And this year, we're obviously beginning the school year with some different approaches and, and watching very closely. But you can see, as we began to plan for school from May to, to where we are today, it's really the lowest point of, of infection that we've seen since COVID's been on the scene. So as we began to plan, the one thing we've always stressed is being flexible. And, and as we looked at those low numbers this summer, and at the end of last school year, our plans coming back reflected that. So we have to pay attention to see what our plans are and, and have to adapt in terms of the number of cases. As we look at the cases and our zip code by age group, and this is an important piece of, of data for us, from May 4th to August 4th, and I just spoke a little bit about the, that, that summer and, and the low numbers that we've experienced, which were the lowest since COVID came on the scene going all the way back. But for a 90-day window, the number of children aged five to 11, so those are unvaccinated students, the, the number of cases that, of COVID in our zip code specifically was six. And at the number for 12 to, to 18 were 15. Now, it's important to note that, you know, beginning in May, students were just now becoming eligible to, to get the vaccine, who were eligible. And then you can see 19 and plus where that, where that number is. And, and again, we were just getting scheduled, people were getting the vaccines, there was that, the, the governor had that kind of schedule that people followed to get the vaccine, and, and we can see that. So I asked for an update of data, beginning on August 1st to August 16th, which is now a 16-day window. So we're going from a 90-day window, where we saw, based on the, the previous county chart, that was the lowest, to now where we are, a shorter window. So let's take a peek at what's happening here. For students that are aged five to 11, in the last 16 days, there's been 10 cases of COVID. For students that are, that are in that age category in the last 16 days. From 12 to, to 18, we've seen in the last 16-day period, seven. And then, of course, 19 and up, we've seen 56 cases. So that's something that we're paying attention to very closely. Because we, you know, look, and we'll get into more data about last year and the numbers and the grade levels and the buildings. So where we are today, and we, we did, we spent a lot of time last year talking about the, the cases, and we gave a breakdown of every single building and who was quarantined, and, and so we're kind of moving into that. We haven't started school yet. So this is self-reported information to us, or students that are part of our athletic programs, or parents who, who let us know. But we have four students as of today who, who have COVID, two high school and two elementary students. And then we have two staff members, one of which was vaccinated, who, who are COVID positive as, as well. So let's take a look back, and, and this is data that we showed a lot last year, if you followed. And, and I know it's a little bit of a flashback, and, and you may wince when you see these things from last year. But I wanted to take a look and, and let us focus on how we began, began last school year, because it was an unknown. We were, we, we knew cases were starting to pick up at the, as school began, that, that chart that I showed, the county, all the cases, we saw that beginning to, to trend up. But, and, and then you can see again, the number of cases for employees and students. And, and obviously, that, that trend line began to move up as we got into those winter months. But I wanted to, to highlight those first few weeks, because we, we've learned about this, and we want to make sure that we're looking at the numbers and kind of referencing them in, in a way that makes sense to us based on our experiences. But the first week of school last year, we had two high school students and one junior high student that, that we began that first week of school who were positive for COVID. And at the elementaries and the other places, there weren't any. That next week, we saw three elementary students who were positive for COVID, and then an additional two at the high school. And, and then you can see those next, where we added in the fourth week, another at the, two more at the elementary and one at the high school. So I'm sharing that, because as we look at the numbers of, of how many students in that zip code that we have, some of them are our students, and I'm assuming some of them aren't. But I wanted to give you a reference. So if we're sitting at 10, what does that mean for us as we begin the school year? And within that first month of school, we did have elementary students with COVID at the beginning of the school year. So we're just trying to get an understanding of these numbers and what they may mean. So the concerns that we have at this time is having unvaccinated people that are vaccinated who are getting COVID. And we know that that's, they can carry it, they can be reinfected, they don't get it nearly as badly if they were unvaccinated. But there's a ripple effect to that, because the way that contact tracing, and I'll talk about that. So if we have an elementary teacher who's been vaccinated, who's not wearing a mask, who's in class with students, and thankfully, that wasn't the case, we're a little bit concerned, because those students, again, our goal is to keep students in class. But that, that teacher who's vaccinated, not wearing a mask, around the classroom, ends up being positive, now we have unvaccinated students who are not wearing a mask, exposed to someone who is positive, who will now have to be quarantined and, and follow those guidelines. So in that scenario, is a concern to us, because we will have a number of students being out on quarantine because they were exposed to someone. And, and that's one of the things that is, is a, is the second concern, which is then unmasked students' exposure to COVID in quarantines. So let's just set aside the, the mask question, does it work, does it not work, and the things that you heard earlier. Let's just focus on what can we do to make sure that students are able to stay in school? And that really is always driven what we do in terms of how we did busing last year and how we did lunches last year. And the concern that we have is if, if there begins to become a spike, the way that the quarantine rules are being implemented now, is that if you have, if you don't have a mask, then you have to quarantine. If you do wear a mask, you don't have to quarantine. And those aren't the district's rules, that's nothing the board is going to vote on. What that is, is simply the rules we have to follow here with, in Ohio. And, and so that's a concern. The younger students positive for COVID, I think it's too early to tell, because we began the year last year with students who are positive for COVID in that first window that I shared. So we really don't know if, if we are running ahead or behind. School hasn't begun, we do the rolling start this week. And I think it's important, again, our goal is to get students in classes face to face as much as possible. And, and I think we're going to need a little bit of time to see if there's, you know, if there's a pattern with that. Predictability is something that is a concern, because if this was behaving the same way as it had in the past, because we have different variants now that are part of where we are. If, if we didn't have that, we would feel much better about, well, here's what we learned last year, these were the numbers, these are the things that we can do, here's things that we can do if we begin to see a spike, remediation, to slow it down, to stop it, again, with the goal of keeping kids in school. But we know that the Delta variant behaves a little bit differently. We've seen it here already with what's being, you know, how it's being transmitted. So we, we need a little more understanding of that predictability to get a better understanding of how this behaves. And, and frankly, just being able to utilize all the tools that we have available to keep students in school, I think we all agree that that's our ultimate goal, to do that. Social distancing, we, we changed lunches at the elementary, for example. Teachers stayed with their students, they didn't go down to the lunchroom. We limited moving through the buildings, and we did all of those strategies. And I think last year, we were pretty effective at trying to reduce those numbers. It wasn't just masks, masks were a part of it, they are a tool. But it also was all of these other factors that were implemented that changed the fabric of the school day. And last year, the board heard people complain about, you know, alternating days at the high school and the junior high. And, and we did make adjustments. When we were back in the, in, in November and December, we made adjustments. We changed things in terms of face-to-face instruction based on what was happening in our buildings. And, and overall, I think that we saw in, in the feedback regarding the results of that, and people who are outside the district looking at what we're doing, I think thought we did as good of a job as we could, given the circumstances. Again, the goal's always been keeping students there. So these are the concerns that we have on the eve of school beginning. And, and these are things that we're going to continue to monitor very closely, because we may have to make some adjustments. And that shouldn't come as a surprise, because even when the numbers were low in July and August, we said, what? We said we need to be flexible. And at that point in time, there were very few cases in the area. And, and so that's very important to us. Today, around noon, the Wood County Health Department released new guidelines in terms of keeping our students in school. We have a great relationship with Wood County Health Department, they worked very hard to, to do just that, to keep our students in school. And, and you can go online and, and take a look at, it's multi-page. But we're going through it now and taking a look at the rules and things that, that the procedures that they want us to follow. But it's pretty clear, if you're a student and you're in a classroom, and you haven't been vaccinated, and you're in a mask, you can stay in school if you have not been exposed to COVID. So just, again, taking, taking the argument, the debate that we heard during public comments aside, the way that we have to begin to follow, and this is from ODH actually, and you can see here, you know, whether or not students are, are in a mask, yes or no, if they're vaccinated. And as you go through that, pretty much it arrives at the same conclusion, which is if you're masked and you've been exposed, you can stay in class if it's a classroom exposure. And, and that is what they're doing. So for us, that's something that we're going to have to consider possibly if we see the numbers increase. Because that's going to have an impact on what? On students being able to come to school, to stay in school, and not be out of school. And, and that's going to be a challenge. So this is something that we have to do as a staff, and, and it's, it's really challenging for us, but this is the information on every positive COVID case that we have to fill out and submit to the state. The contractor the state has hired to collect this data to do contact tracing. So like last year, we need to know who's sitting around, a student, who is, who's eating lunch, and all of those kinds of things. So as, as things winded down last year with the number of cases, the, the process that we used last year, we became fewer and fewer cases at the end of the year, which we all celebrated. But then now, as we're starting off, there is, you know, a new reporting system, and we're seeing this happen at a time where we're starting to get more reports of cases. So our staff is, is nervous about the requirements and reporting, and again, dropping what they're doing to do contact tracing, which, which we did all last year. And again, I just included another flow chart, which, you know, outlines how, you know, the school receives a call from a parent, they report the sickness, they collect the data, they notify the Wood County Health Department, and you can see the process that will follow. And then the school sends out a letter on behalf of the county that lets them know, you know, what, what they have to do to get, to get back into school, or whether or not they have to or not. And we're very familiar, we had over 3,000 students quarantined last year. And that's a significant amount of time, when you think about the lost in face-to-face instruction. So when we're talking about this and the concern that staff has, it's not one or two people we're talking about. But it's, it's hundreds, it's thousands of, of kids who are being quarantined, staff that's being quarantined, and that's going to be a challenge. And the way that things are being lined up is, if you want your child to be in school, the way to do that is to have them in a mask. And, and that's how ODH and Wood County is, is, you know, setting up what we're doing with contact tracing, which we have to do. So again, the, the school year, the guidance, we have to be flexible. We want to be flexible because we want to keep kids in school. We also want to keep people safe. And, and I was one of those, and I, we had our, our staff kickoff this morning, and, and I said this to, to everybody that was, that was at the high school. I was one of those people that, that looked at what was happening over the summer and the way things were going. People were getting vaccinated, people were out, they're moving around. And then as we're starting to get back to school, we're beginning to hear about masking and, and this, this new Delta, you know, variant. And, and in a moment of frustration, it's kind of like, well, wait a minute, kids are going to Cedar Point, and they're going to camps, and they're going to all of these places and doing all of these things. Why are we going to ask them to show up with masks when they haven't had them on, when they're going to the movies and things like that? And I had somebody point out to me and said, not all kids are doing those things, families are making the are making decisions not to go to Cedar Point, not to go to the theater, families that are making decisions to protect the loved ones at home, or those children that might have cystic fibrosis or other diseases that are very susceptible. And they're not making those decisions to go to those places. There's no law, and I don't think there is one, but I wouldn't be surprised if it does happen. But Cedar Point does not require all students to attend Cedar Point and go there. It certainly would be a good thing for them if they did that. But there is a law that says that all students have to attend school, we have to be available for them. And so that kind of checked my feelings because I was thinking, you know, you're going out, you're about, you're seeing all these people doing these things, but you're right, you're not. And in that classroom, there are those cases. And I think our approach has been much like with a peanut allergy, for example. And I know it's apples and oranges. But we make sure that we're keeping students safe, we're putting them in a position where they're not going to be exposed, we try to reduce that. And we ask parents not to come with peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, to avoid those kinds of things, to look at what's going in the lunch bag, we have special places for them to eat. And, you know, we're going to approach this school year, as long as we can, with being flexible, working with the health department, asking parents to be a partner with screening. But also, as cases begin to pop up in buildings and across the district, we are going to employ everything that we can to try to keep kids in school. And that will mean social distancing, it may mean scheduling changes like we did last year, it may mean trying to do something different with school buses, and it may mean that masks are part of that equation. There isn't a magic bullet here. But we do know that all of these things together allow us to keep kids in school, and that's ultimately our goal. And, you know, it's one of those things that no matter what we do, people are not going to be happy. And that's the one takeaway, I think, with COVID. It doesn't matter what we do or what we say, people are not going to be happy about that. And we get that. And, you know, it comes back to when we have five inches of snow on the ground and the wind is starting to pick up, and I don't want to compare a snow day and what happens there. But the safest thing for us to do when there's an inch of snow is to stay home, wait for the sun to come out, wait for them to work on the roads. But we don't do that because we have to go on, we have to find a balance. But when there are five or six inches of snow on the ground and the wind is blowing, then we have to take different precautions, maybe it's a delay, maybe we wait to see what the afternoon is going to bring. And sometimes we have to cancel. Those are all the tools that we have available to keep people safe. And that is a heavy, heavy burden on school people when you make that decision. Because the last thing you'd want to do is have anybody get hurt on their way into school, staff or students or families. But we can't not come to school because this is something that is part of living in Ohio. And so our approach, I think, is we can take away from that. Again, it's not comparing apples to apples, but I think we can take away from that kind of the same approach, which is if there is a little bit of weather, be careful, come in, let's use the safeguards, take your time. But when things begin to stack up and the wind kicks up and there's ice and there's snow to follow, we're going to take different precautions to what we have to do to keep people safe, to get them to school, that's ultimately our goal on that day. And I think that's how we're beginning to approach the school year. And I can tell you that no one is happy on snow days, no one. I mean, people are happy on snow days, let me correct myself. But you're not going to have everybody on the same page, and I think it's very similar to where we are today. But I think we all can agree that we want students to be in school. We don't want this to spread. And we don't want kids to be sick if they don't have to be. And we want kids to come to school and enjoy and experience school the way that we all did when we were young before COVID. And we're trying to find that right balance. And we need to have a little bit of grace, we need to have a little bit of understanding that we're doing our best based on the data, based on everything that we can pull together. And we're going to continue to do that. And certainly put the board in a mode where they have the information they need to make the best decisions. And we'll bring the recommendations that we think is really the best for our children and our community, and we'll continue to do that. And it's not easy, and I'm sorry, it's not easy. And I'm sorry for the parents that are worried, and you hear that in both sides that are here tonight and sending emails and everything, and we know that. And we carry that weight with us, like that decision about a snow day. But we know it's going to be a struggle until we have a better understanding of what's happening, and then we have to be prepared to take steps. And we don't know exactly what those steps will be and when. And when those moments come, I think it'll be pretty clear to everybody in the community why we're doing what we're doing. Doesn't mean everyone's going to like it, but I think the board can look and say, based on what's happening, this is the best thing that we feel we need to do. And be respectful about it because we all want the kids to have a great experience. And that's what gets us up in the morning, that's what makes people run for school board, hopefully, and that's why, you know, we have the staff that we do and continue to operate that way. So that's kind of an update, and happy to answer any questions.
Well, I did just get a tweet from 13 Weather that we are anticipating heavy fog in the morning.
Of course.
There you go.
When the locusts come, I'll start to worry.
Yes, exactly, exactly. Well, from what I... I am so torn on this because I'm straddling the fence and getting saddle sore at this particular point. Gretchen made a point this morning that these are kind of like pillars that we have to choose on how to keep our children safe and make sure that they're here. And they can't, the younger ones can't be vaccinated, and so it keeps leaning, I forgot what the other pillar was.
Isolation, staying at home.
Isolation, staying at home, which is not optimal, and then, which leaves you the mask pillar, and that makes sense. But then, there's the other side where it can be parental choice. Once again, I like your analogies. It seems to me like we're at the one-inch snow level right now. Proceed with caution. Drive slowly, watch for ice. Allow extra time to get to school, that type of thing, all the precautions that you do, but you still come. And how a person chooses to get here is up to them. And I'm kind of leaning for that philosophy at this particular point to generate the choice at this point that seems logical to me for those who want to wear masks and have those on all the time, they can do that. We do have two times where we're required to wear the masks, like this morning's assembly. But at this point, I don't think we're at the four-to-five-inch snow level, as you put it. By next week, we could be. And then we have to reevaluate. But in July and the beginning, June, July, and the beginning of August, we were so looking forward to this being and looking like a more normal school year. Maybe I'm clutching onto that and not willing to let that go quite yet. So I'm kind of leaning that direction.
I'd like to speak to, may I say something to the audience instead of the board?
You really shouldn't. I mean, you can talk to the board, they can hear your conversation.
Okay.
They can just drop.
Well, my heart goes, I'm speaking to the board now. My heart goes out to the parents who are concerned about their child's safety and wishing that everyone wore masks. And if I were in charge of the world, which I'm not, many of you will applaud that, I would require masks, I would have a mask mandate for K through 12, or K through 6, just because they're not vaccinated, it scares me. But my consolation for me, and for the parents who think we should mandate masks, is this district has been, has followed the data intensely. And when it looked like we could open up, we opened up. And when we hit that mark, a week later, we closed back down. I think we watch what we're doing, we don't just blindly listen to one person and say, all right, we're going to do that. We look at the data, we discuss it. I think our guidance is very, very good. I think Tom and his committee really, really keep us well-informed as to what's going on, and I have every confidence. If we look at the numbers and we say, oh my gosh, those K through 6, they better mask up, then that's what we'll do. So I give, I do, and I also, but anyway, that's my two cents. I thank you for what you do.
Gretchen, thanks for teeing that up because I don't know that I have anything different to add or say on that. You know, my pillars have always been as much in-class learning as possible, as safely as possible, and in a way that is least disruptive to the community, to the parents. Kid gets quarantined, you know, you got to find, you got to figure out childcare, you got to call off from work, you know, all of those are still, still exist today. And I worry about the quarantine because as Tom said, we can't control that. So, you know, and looking at kids without masks, their chances of being quarantined are much, are much more likely they're going to happen. So that does concern me. But again, that last slide, Tom showed, I do know that we have the process, we learned a lot last year, to be able to evaluate, when is the right time to take action, if we need to take action? So I hold firm to that. I have that trust, or maybe it was the, how we did with COVID in the survey, I'm sorry, Tom.
No.
I'm starting to lose my thoughts here, I apologize. I also, and I also have faith in this community. So people say, well, you know, why does that high vaccination rate in Perrysburg matter? Well, I guess for me and my rose-colored glasses is that, well, this is a community that cares about each other, cares about their students. I completely get parental rights. I mean, I do know that as one of the public speakers said, you know, we do have the ability to mandate, we mandate all sorts of other stuff. And a mask mandate, when necessary, if necessary, won't be a far bridge for me to cross. But I have faith at this community, you know, along with those parent rights becomes some responsibility, too. And I hope as we're talking to our children, getting them ready for the school day, they're also encouraging them in a way that is reasonable to say, you know, if that child next to you is wearing a mask, put a mask on. You know, a little bit of empathy, a little bit of concern and regard for those around you isn't a bad thing, not a bad thing. So I'm not ready to take an action tonight to change any type of, to change this recommendation, but I will in the future, depending on where the numbers go with this.
Tom, that flow chart that you showed, that, I mean, you sent it to us, the one from ODH that shows the quarantine rules, yeah, bingo, look at you. Is that something that's posted on our website that people can see?
I'm not sure if it's on our website, we certainly can add it, and we'll do that later tonight or tomorrow. It is part of this presentation, which has been posted to Board Docs, so people can access it that way. And it's also available on the Ohio Department of Health website, they have multi, you know, many links there that'll take you to find this, so.
The reason why I ask is because I think that that suggested flow chart from ODH for any parent that is trying to decide, do I send them with a mask, don't I send them with a mask? That might be helpful guidance, just because if you are wearing a mask and you are exposed, then you don't have to quarantine. Am I reading that correctly?
Right.
I can't really, I'm going from memory because I can't read it from here.
Right, right.
And that could be a large determining factor for a parent to decide, kiddo, the numbers are going up, I want you to wear a mask for a while so that we can get through this spike. That could be good guidance for them if it's, I'd like to be sure it's accessible.
Yeah, I think it's on Board Docs also, I was just told that it is also on our website now already, and it's in the COVID-19, the guidance section, so parents can pull that down. I think this is going to be an area where there's going to be a lot of conversations and clarifications because this is from ODH, and then it's up to each county then to take this and make it work. And as I mentioned, it, I think the challenge that we're going to have is if you are vaccinated, this is how contact tracing occurs for you as a person. If you are not vaccinated and you're masked, this is how it's going to work for you, and this is the rules we have to follow. And if you're unvaccinated and unmasked, then here's what it is. Before, everybody was not vaccinated at that time, and everyone was in a mask, and everybody got the same path. Now, you have a flow chart where if it's this, then it's this. That's going to take a little bit of time to kind of work through early on, kind of feeling where the department is, and then what information do they need from us to make those decisions? So it's going to be a little bit challenging, a little bit different from before, and that has us worried. And again, that example of having a vaccinated staff member in an elementary setting with COVID, and we're going to have those cases, you know, we know those are happening, not at a great rate, but they are. That knocks out how many students in that classroom? And if they change for science and math, like many of the upper elementaries, you know, how many more? And that's going to be really challenging for our staff to kind of wade through and communicate that.
Tom, here's where I'm at. Back and forth every day, every second. But I used to have a saying back in the office that we don't make decisions, decisions make us. In other words, there's consequences for the decisions we make. And everybody has to make a decision what's best for them. But then I also go on the other side of the coin, what about our vulnerable students? So where is the kindness and the respect for those students that go to the school that has some health issues that are concerning to some parents, that have expressed to us through email? So again, I really appreciated all the emails that we received, most of them. The tones were very positive and very informative, just as we've heard tonight, and yet a divisive topic, a topic on, should we make it mandate? And we heard about spaghetti straps and other things that we do, smoking, and I get I've often said back to the parents, why aren't the parents talking to parents? Why don't you talk and see what the consensus is, what's going on? If you take score tonight and see how many spoke for it, how many spoke against it? I too, Gretchen, Eric, K through 6, cannot get the vaccination, perhaps it's something we need to think about here as we look at the cases in the next couple of days. Maybe that's a start for mandating masks. At this point, I'm just saying, I would hope that first day of school, that when leaders, leaders, the board, I've not heard from the mayor, the governor, the president of the United States, we've not heard from the local pastors in this district. So superintendent is the leader of this district and the board will have to make a decision in regards to students in schools and masking. But my point is, maybe the first day of school, we're going to be surprised, and maybe 60% of students will wear masks. How do we know? No one knows that. We hear opinions, we hear statistics, we hear suggestions, maybe we'll be surprised. I don't know. Maybe I've got my head in the sand and, you know, I'm thinking too much utopia. But I would say right now with what you've shown us, hit the pause button for a moment, folks have a choice. I know what I would do. Matter of fact, I walk downtown Perrysburg, Mercy is there waiting to give vaccines, I'd take my third and fourth one if I could, but they're only allowing two right now. I'll wear a mask when I'm out and about, I'll wear a mask if I'm in that audience. But that's me, and that's my, that's my choice. But I also think about that other person who I'm around that may be vulnerable, and I don't know, yeah, I hear statistics on masks and science and research, you know what? It doesn't hurt me to put that on if I'm around somebody else, close enough contact, to respect them, that's all. The respect for others, the kindness for others, to me, that has to weigh in somewhere. So that being said, that's where I'm at, if that made any sense whatsoever.
Are we doing, you mentioned a lot of protocols that we did last year as far as, like, the traffic pattern in the hallways, and obviously the distancing will be done. Are we at three feet or six feet now? Are we doing all those other protocols since the numbers are rising? Are we reinstating all of those for, initially for right now?
We're not. You know, the things we have ready to do and implement will... You know, the, the, the things we have ready to do and implement, we'll, we'll do those things as, as we, you know, we haven't had students in school yet. And I think once we begin to see and experience that, we're going to listen to our staff, we're going to see what the numbers are, and then we'll make those kind of adjustments as needed. We have Plan B because we lived it last year. There are some components, though, that we're not beginning the year with, like alternating days. That's a pretty drastic thing, and that's a big step. And even, even when we did that last year, because we had people saying, there's no reason to do that, send the kids, send them all every single day. Three thousand kids were quarantined last year. We stretched as far as we could to, 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 to find that balance. So those are very dramatic changes, but we, we, we know what it takes to do that. But we also have the justification, we have to look people in the eye to say, we're going to create this change, and, and hopefully people will understand why. Today, I, I, I couldn't look you in the eye and say, we're going to start alternating days, or we're going to send kids home for two weeks. We're not there. But, but there may be a time where, where we are, and we're hoping that when we reach that point, everybody understands, maybe doesn't agree, but they understand why. And it's because, hey, we've had to close the high school for two weeks because of X, Y, and Z, so we're going to come back and do X, Y, you know, A, B, and C. Those are the kinds of things that we're talking about. Those are dramatic. But what are the things that we can do in the meantime with traffic patterns, with lunches, with those things? But it is, it is undoing. It's not as easy as just saying, we're just going to go ahead and change lunches. And Emily knows that. To change lunch is not very easy in the elementary world. It, it, it changes people's schedules and, and it takes a lot of work. We're willing to do that when the time comes. And, and, you know, so we're waiting to see.
Okay, so I was wondering, like sanitation stations, are we still going to have a lot of those around?
We will. Sanitation, spacing, hand washing, you know, all those kinds of things, the hygiene, the self-checks, all those things will be, things that we'll be doing. The, the airflow inside the buildings in terms of ventilation, that's something that we're continuing to make sure that we're bringing in as much fresh air as possible, making those adjustments with the units. All those kinds of things, I think, are, are essential to what we do. But again, there isn't a magic bullet, and the goal is to keep kids in school. And, and if we see hundreds of kids at Frank who are out on quarantine, we're going to have to huddle and say, what can we do differently to keep kids in school? And, and that's where those plans will emerge. And if, and, and we did this. We, we had, things happened in one building and not another building. And, and that's an important approach that we're not going to say across the district until we reach that point like we did when everybody knew we had to. It was pretty clear. You know, when we were back in, in these months where, you know, because what's happening in school is happening in the community. And when this was happening in our community, we know it was happening in schools. We were going all virtual. So we know that.
Question, do we know out of the 3,000 students that were quarantined, how many of them had COVID?
So the students who, who had, who were quarantined, we have another number for students that, students and staff that had COVID. We had over 400, almost 500 students and staff combined that had COVID. There were very few classroom transmissions. I think that's what you were getting at. But again, last year, students were in masks, and we only had, we had six feet apart across the board at the high school and junior high for a good part of the year. So there wasn't that kind of classroom transmission. This year, we are coming back with students in the classroom together in close proximity. We cut high school busing because we had to spread elementary students out on the bus. That was required to bus elementary students. This year, we're, we're offering high school transportation. We heard a lot of the disruption that that caused for those students that, that were impacted by that. So, so we're starting off in a different place than we were last year. And we're, and, and again, that, 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 one of the concerns that, that we had is that predictability. You know, if, if it behaves and acts like it did before, we know what to expect. If it's a different animal, then we're, we're learning again. And, and that's a concern, and as noted here.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Mrs. Ubank, you want to?
Yeah, yeah, I'll say my preference. My preference would be that the district would not involve itself in the health decisions of the families and the staff. I, looking at the pandemic for the last 18 months, I trust that families can make their choice and their decision and do the risk benefit ratio on what works best for them.
Any questions from Mr. Hostler? Any questions from Mr. Hostler? Okay, moves on then to Treasury report. Thank you, Mr. Hostler, for the report.
Thanks.
Golden Gate will be here, the consultants.
Yes, tonight I will not be presenting you personally with the financial statement for July, since I've only been here two weeks and I do not have my hands around it.
John, you're going to have to move your microphone over to you because they won't hear you.
I don't want them to hear. Tonight I will not be presenting personally the financial statement for the month of July. I've only been here two weeks, and I do not have my hands around the financial statements yet. But I have brought in, as I did last Friday for the Finance Committee, a company called Golden Gate Financial Services. They have dealt with you over the past several years, and they know more about the finance of this district than I do, and they would probably do a better presentation. The only thing I would tell you about them is I have not, never dealt with them. I've dealt with other companies, and this company has their Perrysburg heart in their souls. They would do anything they can to help this district.
Can I take about 30 seconds before we get started? If anybody else wants to leave now, go ahead because I know you may want to stay at a whole meeting, but we're getting a lot of traffic flow. Could you close the door, Brooke? Kelly, thanks. Thank you.
And I, and I do apologize, since I don't know how to spell well, financial was misspelled on the front page. I'd like to present you with Golden Gate Financial Services, Jeff, Dornbusch, and Cajun Keaton.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Scott. It is an honor actually to be here. We have had the wonderful opportunity to work with Perrysburg Schools, starting with Mrs. Harrington several years ago. We don't always get to do this, which is to get to come to board meetings, and obviously, Mr. Scott, very kind words. When we get this opportunity, we really enjoy it because Perrysburg is like a second home. We really have followed things. And we're excited for two reasons. One, that we actually get to be here tonight and, and actually talk in person. But Mr. Scott couldn't have invited us to a better meeting because what we're going to talk about, at least for the next 10 minutes, hopefully not much longer, is the financial condition of Perrysburg schools. And because we've been involved the last several years, this is going to be a great evening financially. It's, it's the kind of thing, I will tell you as board members, this is why you run for a school board, to, to have, put your finances in the shape that you're in. So we're going to get right into it. First of all, is the revenues. And again, in your, in your other packet, there's a little more detail of the revenues. We're just going to highlight, we're one month in, as you would recall, July starts our new fiscal year, and the revenues, usually it's not a comparable month because it's only one month out of 12. And however, two major factors have taken place, and actually three. And I'm going to talk about the, on the next slide is our real estate. So as the people in the audience know, you've hopefully paid your property taxes, hopefully. And so those have come in for the, technically the second half collection, but we get them here in August, and the, and the final settlement was made by the Wood County Auditor. And with that collection, it's our highest revenue source, as it is in most school districts, is your real estate. And it came in at 9.5% increase, which is a, just over $1.5 million. So that's a great way to start the fiscal year. It tails off of last year, and as you recall, there was a triennial update in Wood County, and actually our real estate has been going up across the state of Ohio, probably across the nation, but I can speak more specifically of the state of Ohio. I think everybody knows what's going on with real estate. It's a good thing if you're selling your real estate right now because you are getting some really good numbers there. And, and, and again, that's, it is something that we all worried about, treasures across the state. When this pandemic started, we were fearful. The county auditors warned us, we need to factor in higher delinquency rates because we didn't know what was going to happen. We didn't know if we were going to be able to work. We didn't know if people would be able to pay their taxes. And quite honestly, just the opposite has happened. So no one really predicted the, I guess, it's not a benefit of the pandemic certainly, but it, instead of being the negative that we all predicted, it, things have, real estate has actually gone up. Tangible personal property, Mr. Keaton will be talking here next on, on our school state funding, but he's also in charge of the Pipeline Coalition. But we had some increase there with a little bit of pipeline monies coming through the Perrysburg district as well. Again, that, public utility values are, are always very good if you can have those in your district. And then, so overall, the total collection, as you can see there, up about, just about 10% as we start the month of July. So we're starting the new fiscal year on a very strong footing as far as real estate. On the next slide, this is another, again, it's definitely a timing issue. It's, again, it's income tax. We have a school district income tax here, as you know. At the top is just showing the first quarter, simply showing, trying to show you there the first quarter, which was here in July. A year ago, that's that second with the little yellow jacket there, $1.8 million was our collection last July. This year, $3.4 million. That's an 88, over 80% increase in income tax collection for schools. Now, again, part of this is timing. If you remember, as you guys file your taxes, we filed them in a normal year, which seems like forever ago, but we, April 15th is tax day. Last year, they gave us until July. July 15th. And then this year, they, instead of April, they made it May. Each one of those had timing issues with when people file their taxes, because even people that received some of that unemployment that we all heard about, or maybe received, they still had to pay the school district income tax on that, albeit maybe at a later month. All that shifts it into a different fiscal year. I say all that to say, we're not going to necessarily be up 80% on our income tax. But what we can say is we've, we're off to a very good start. It shows that people are paying in. We were worried they weren't going to pay. We didn't know if they'd have jobs and, and how all that would work. We certainly didn't know two years ago, the unemployment situation or compensation that the government might help us with. So these have, again, helped us, and now, as you know, most, we all know there's employment out there, as if you've ever been in a restaurant here trying to wait to get, waited on. There's a, a great demand for employees right now to return to work, and we hope, you know, hope that will continue. So the bottom part on there is just showing that actually income tax for the fiscal year, as I believe you heard last month, was actually down. So from 7.7 million to 7.6. So that was last fiscal year. Again, things got shifted. So now we're seeing at the top, we're starting to see that benefit of that delay that's going to help this fiscal year. Again, these things, over time, if you look from back to fiscal year 15 on, we get about a 4% increase in that, in that revenue bucket for your income tax. This year is just, again, just like COVID, like everything, it's kind of made things topsy-turvy on, on trends. But I think we, you know, we'll be conservative working with Mr. Scott and, and of course, the new treasurer on, on predictions here in Wood County and, and the people who live in the district who pay that. Next, I'd like to have Mr. Keaton take over on our state funding.
So first off, let me just say, we are in the middle of one of the largest overalls in school funding in the state's history, and so it's a very exciting time for school treasures. Doesn't take much to get us excited. So one, one of the things I will say is we're here with, with this funding overhaul greatly because of your superintendent, Mr. Hostler. He was, so I want to sincerely thank this board for allowing him the time to put into this, to help get this passed. Not only was he one of seven superintendents in the state to be a part of this, and I had the pleasure to serve with him, but he was truly a leader within the work group. Just real quick, it was, you know, right after the Parkland shooting, we were meeting in Columbus, and the treasures in, in the room, we were all fighting over, well, why does this urban school district get this amount of money and this suburban get this amount of money? And Tom really refocused the conversation back on kids and, and, and really, you know, encouraged us to think about that day in and day out. And that's something we've carried with us since that meeting. So again, Mr. Hostler deserves, you know, has my respect during that process. And, and what it yielded, again, was one of the biggest funding overalls in the state's history. So very proud of that. One of the things we are going to potentially look at going down the road is, are we going to be able to fully fund this formula? And that's where we're going to need Mr. Hostler's help for hopefully the Fair School Funding 2.0. You could see the difference there in, in funding if it were to be fully phased in. So that's something we're going to continue to advocate our state representatives for down the road in the future. So if you saw that little kid there, that's typically how I look when I have a hot cup of coffee, it's kind of surprised me. That's what the Fair School Funding formula will do to a treasurer and certainly a board of education if you're not really in tune to what's going on. So if you look on the next slide, one of the things I will point out is that all the numbers coming out currently are simulations. I never like to forecast on simulations until I see the data. Certainly, EMIS is a, is a big deal to every school district, but until we know how many kids are coming through the door, we're hearing that across the state, record kindergarten numbers and things of that nature. So until the impact is, is known on the first day of school, we won't truly know what the funding is. But here's what we can expect, an increased funding from O D E, but that's going to come in two parts, lower revenues and also lower expenses. Part of the school funding formula was that we are not going to deduct from the local school district and pay, we're not going to take from Perrysburg and give to the local, give to the area charter schools. They're going to get the money directly from the state. That doesn't mean Perrysburg doesn't lose any money, it just, that's an opportunity loss versus the state paying direct. So what, what that's going, what the board's going to see is our purchase services will be down, and our revenues will also be down, a, a little lower, hopefully, than our expenses. So one of the things that I wanted to get across to the board tonight is that is going to throw, throw off, you know, I thought we were supposed to get this extra state funding, and our revenues are down. Well, that's because the expenses are down a little more than that. So just, that'll be, keep an eye on that in the future.
On the expense side, again, as we, we wind down our presentation for the month of July, you know, we, you always see your expenses, and it's, this is one of the things I will, hats off to the negotiating team here at Perrysburg. You, your bargaining units agreed to a, from a 26 pay cycle to 24. So we all get just two pays a month, because here's what's happened. Last year, there were three pays in July, this year only two, so it looks like we're down 14 and a half percent in our rev, or our expenses and salaries. Of course, that's not the case, it's a timing issue. And our districts that have the 26 pays, you, you deal with this, and then next month it, it writes itself. I, I added another slide, and the next slide basically said, here's really what we were. Salaries were, when you add that extra pay back in, we're three point, just over three and a half percent increase in our salaries for the month of July, and, and our overall expenses were up. Again, just one month comparable, not always reliable. The, the revenue is very reliable because those sources of revenue only come in, those income taxes is once a quarter, and the real estate just twice a year. So a lot more predictability on, on our revenue. So expenses, you know, again, salaries, we got a whole new staff coming in here, starting school tomorrow, is that what I, tomorrow? And in a growing district, which is very rare, except for in Northwest Ohio, Perrysburg is a growing district, and it's, why does a district grow? Because people want to be here, and also the reputation of the schools, no doubt. So that's why the people want to move here and be a part of this. So let's see what our next slide here is.
So we, obviously, we talked a lot about COVID and, but there was also some money tied to COVID from the federal government, and just want to briefly go over S R 1, 2, and 3. So the district received, you know, just under a half a million dollars, and, and we'll, we'll say S R 1 and 2, obviously, that was, the majority of that was spent. And I'm, I'm sure there was many, many, many more expenses tied to COVID than, than what the federal government allowed here. S R 3, obviously, there's still some funds available there, and that's only because that money was allocated at a later date, 1, 2, and then 3. And so the, the district does, is. then 3. And, so the district does, is, my understanding, has a plan for those funds, but they just weren't able to be used at this point due to when they were allocated. So, a little bit of background on ESER. And then, the next slide, just wanted to just show the board, you know, how Perrysburg, how did you fare, the top part of that graph, and ESER allocations from the federal government compared to Lucas and Wood Counties? And you could see where Perrysburg landed on that equation. And, and again, this was tied to title allocations, Title I allocations, country, you know, statewide, or throughout the United States. But, one of the thing, I guess frustrating things is, you know, Perrysburg is obviously in session, and certainly had those expenses. Some, the way the federal government allocated those monies, you know, now, there's, there's the pendulum, there's districts now that don't know what to spend their money on, and there's districts that had far surpassed their COVID expenses and what they actually received in reimbursement. The lower graph shows how Perrysburg fared in ESER funding comparatively across Wood County, just to give the board a perspective of what other schools are receiving in the county.
Take back to that graph, Mr. Hostler, the last one. That's fine. You see Perrysburg's a little lower, but if you look at the size of the students, that isn't, isn't show the relativity of how really low of amount of money you receive. You've got schools like, you know, Elmwood or Atsigo getting about the same amount of money as a district the size of Perrysburg. So, again, that, that graph does, does what it's designed to do, but you guys, I want to, you just look at the names of the schools, and you know the size. And, and I think we talked a little bit about, in the finance committee with Mr. Pullman, Mr. Bennington, about Toledo Public, an online, their online charter academy. And, you know, there's people that question, why don't we do things like that? I want you to see the, the, the big bar there. That's Toledo Public. And again, God bless them. They, they got that money, and that's, they can do great things with that. But, we were not, we did not receive that kind of money. And, and not to mention, we still might have our own online services anyway. So, the next slide is something, again, working here with Ms. Norris years ago, you have a permanent improvement fund, actually two, a technology fund and a maintenance fund, along with a capital renovation fund. And, these funds have never been as strong as, they, I shouldn't say that. In the last several years, they've never been this strong. This doesn't mean we have all kinds of money to do whatever. I look at the technology fund, and you can see there, I think Mr. Schwartzmiller's in the room, I believe, and just the one-to-one technology, I mean, that may seem, like a million dollars may seem like a lot of money, but in a district this size, to keep our kids up to date with technology and our teachers, what that requires, you're blessed to have a technology fund that's, that's approved by the district, along with a maintenance fund. In a growing district, I know what it's like to deal with just a district that's not growing, maintaining things, but when you have to continually look for ways to deal with your growth, you're blessed to have this PI, PI fund. And, you know, I, and you'll see here in the next slide about your history on levies. But, again, this is part of what we're here to do, is not to, not only just, just mention how good July is, but where you are sitting as a board, especially for your next treasurer, make that person smile when they, when they actually look at the books. So, I wanted to point out, and we have just two slides left, here is the community support. 2016, very large renewal levy. 2019, when a growing district like Perrysburg, state funding not keeping up, which is why Mr. Keaton, we're very proud of him too, because he was on this committee, to try and fix school funding, especially for districts like Perrysburg, who constantly get new growth, new students, but the state funding did not keep up. They were aware of it, but they never could ever get anything done until this year. So, really excited about that. And of course, you just, last year, had a PI renewal, which was on the previous slide. And I think that will add to your long-term stability, especially as you deal with, you know, your, your exploding growth here. So, our last slide, I think, and I started out with this, and Cajun, if you have something to add as well, financially, on top of, at least with everything else going on in the world, and everything you have to deal with right now, your finances are strong. And, picture the district out there that's dealing with everything we've talked about tonight, and then has a levy, has, talk about staffing cuts, and staff worrying about that, and the students and the community, and not knowing if they're going to be school busing next, next year to where Perrysburg is. You guys have put yourselves in a position of financial strength, and that's to be applauded. It's to be, it didn't come easily, but we've watched over the last few years, and that's, we are really proud of this. Our Cajun and I, both our wives are teachers. We're very heavily invested in public education. We love public education. We, we love to see a school funding formula that doesn't penalize us, that can actually help public schools. And so, we're really proud. But I, I, I can just tell you that if you can take a step back, and with all the other major concerns about our health, because that is top priority, at least you can, you have the money and resources to do great things for kids, which I got to believe is why you ran for the school board, because that's what's really cool. And you guys have put yourselves in that position. Again, just one month in, but what a great start. So, Cajun?
Yes.
Any other questions, I guess, at this time for the board, from the board?
Board, any questions?
That was great.
Yeah.
I understand it so much better. I really, I loved all your slides. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much for the report and, and good comments. Thank you.
And best of luck to your treasure search, and I'm sure you guys will come up with a great candidate, so.
Thank you very much. Need a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Second.
Real call, please, Mr. Scott.
Mrs. Laramo.
Yes.
Mrs. Downs.
Yes.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank.
Yes.
Mr. Pullman.
Yes. Motion carries. At this point, I'd like to take a five-minute break, if that's okay, board. Thank you very much. We'll take a five-minute break. Thank you.
Meeting was actually postponed, so there is an attachment to the agenda of the things that she wanted everybody to read.
So, what's posted here is what?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Mrs. Laramo, operations?
Um, well, again, James does a good job of sending the information. I think probably the biggest thing is the news that we got, that there's a glitch in the portables. But, from what I could see in my notes, one thing that I really liked to hear about was the air quality that they have done. one thing that I really liked to hear about was the, um, air quality that they have done throughout the district and increasing the, the, um, the outside ventilation to in and the upgrade in the filters. So it's a, it's a little confusing, but bottom line, there is a benchmark of where you don't want your air quality to go above, uh, because then that's bad. And we are below in all, all areas. So don't say that we're below the air quality. Below the benchmark is good. It's excellent. So we have, we're not, we're not at that benchmark, which means our air quality is bad. We are below on all categories. So that's, that's a wonderful thing to know about our district, that all the efforts that they have done is really paying off.
I think I was the one who asked about that at the last meeting. You know, I know we upgraded on the HBI, V eight, VHAC. I think that's, so is that what you're talking about? They actually did the?
Yeah, the air quality is, is below the, the benchmark, which measures that your air quality needs to be improved. So.
Are we going to see those reports? Cause I just, I'm curious what, what it is?
I think they're writing the reports right now. Those were the, that was like the bottom line summary.
What do they look at? Right. Okay. And they did one at every school?
Yes, that's across the district.
Okay. Excellent. I look forward to seeing that.
Personnel committee?
The personnel committee met. Uh, we discussed the, um, Jeff Abke and the development department, and they have generated five million dollars in their existence, which is very, very good. Uh, they are one full time and one quarter time, I think. They really need to go to one full time with an assistant. And the reason they need to do that is because for every donation, there are at least, there's at least one letter or two. And to get all those letters out in a timely fashion, to be able to, uh, schedule and do development type work. If you're stuck in the office doing thank you notes, it's hard to get out and, and do what, what needs to be done. So they are looking into expanding and you'll be hearing more about that as it comes up. I just want you to be aware that it's coming. Do you want to, Eric was there. He can add to my report.
Pardon? I don't think your mic's on.
But I was there, but I can tell you that, and I won't add to that.
Oh, you weren't there. It was right.
He was previous, but I will add to Gretchen's comments is that there's so many asks out there that aren't being made. So just the manpower, the woman power we need in that particular department because of, again, as Gretchen said, the five million dollars over the time we've had Jeff's been sufficient. I want to point out in personnel that, uh, we can stay within a budget of eight staff members. Although we've hired, what is it, 21, 24? So a number that we've, we've replaced, we've moved around through retirement or what have you, but we stayed within the budget of the eight teachers that need to be hired. So once again, uh, you know, you heard the finance report and a tribute to the previous boards and German Davis, past president to get to the point where we're at today and this board and Mr. Hostler, treasurers that we have in our department and the community for saying yes. But, um, I wanted to make sure we understood with the personnel committee that the teachers that we said we'd hire has been hired and that's been maintained, especially in a growing district. Although we know that we've had several students enroll on Sunday and we'll have several throughout this week. Changes could be made to that number, which is understandable. Uh, how about teaching and learning committee? TNL, that would be Gretchen and Kelly?
Yes, I was unable to attend, so Gretchen?
We had a wonderful presentation on the jacket way. Uh, it is, it is in all buildings. It's the same, the, the same font on the size, the same color ink used. So that when, whether they are in kindergarten or senior in high school, they're, they're really being, um, ready, responsible.
Respectful.
And respectful. Uh, so it was a really good presentation. Uh, I, did you have a chance to sit in on it when the teachers, when he did it for the new teachers?
No. Oh, um, no.
Okay. I, I, cause I, he invited you and I thought maybe you would, had a chance, but, uh, the other thing we did, which you all can see, we got to see the OTES, which is the, uh, evaluation tool. And it's new this year and there is a wonderful, uh, video that really explains. It's really for the teachers' benefits, but it's something that if you look at it, you will really, it's really good. So. Yes, it was.
Ah, there you go. He's got a new career.
Well, Brent and who, who is the, the guru?
OTES 2.0 is here with an emphasis on collaboration, coaching, and professional growth. This new evaluation system is highly student focused and has the expectation that teachers take the lead.
So OTES is the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System. So OTES is by law, it is the evaluation system that all school districts have to, um, all school districts have to, uh, use. And so this is, they're rolling out a, a new program and people are, um, learning about what it takes to do. So Brent and his team, Jason Hubbard, who, who put this together, really walks everybody through it in a, in a very, um, easy to understand in a, in a, in a really critical way that they are better off knowing what to expect from the process. So, because it is their evaluation and there's a lot riding on that and it kind of breaks it down. So there's some new wrinkles to it and, um, I, I think, uh, it's, it's well done and, and I think teachers are really reacting to it well because it's, it's a lot to take in.
And Brent couldn't say enough good about Jason Hubbard and his skills. He's, he's really talented. Um, we talked about this state tests. It's kind of an odd year and we're hanging right in there. We don't know how much they really are valuable in that particular year. Uh, so we didn't spend a lot of time, but we also looked at the, um, one plan. And you also can look at the one plan by clicking on it. So try to get to both of those. The, the video will take you five or six minutes. The one plan will take you a little bit more time. But it, it's a good one. It, it was well done.
Thank you, Mrs. Downs. Mr. Bennington, anything from Penta?
Uh, Penta hadn't met since, since our last work session meeting. Um, you know, they are sending updates via email and, and they're getting ready and excited to open. Of course, they're working through the same issues we're working through as far as what impact COVID will have, uh, how they're gonna, how they're gonna manage masks and social distancing and everything that's needed, particularly when you're, you're doing Vo-Tec education and you got students that have to work really, really close together in order to get things done. But, you know, otherwise, you know, excited for the school year opening over there as well.
Yet this week?
Yes.
And the buses still, still leave from the high, uh, junior high school, correct? I think that's it. The other committees, it looks like they did not meet. Does anybody else have a report, something you want to bring to the board?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Scott for bringing in Golden Gate. Um, it was nice for the rest of the board to get to see Mr. Dornburst and Mr. Keaton. I know, um, Pam had used them, uh, as a valuable resource. You know, they're, they're the folks that help participate and, and, and gather data when we're doing things like the five-year forecast. And that's why our five-year forecast is so good. Is in part due to, you know, the work Pam did and the work that that, uh, those fellows do for us at Golden Gate. So, great. Thank you, Mr. Scott.
You know, and it's also nice to have another set of eyes on the material and also the comments coming from somebody besides us or superintendent or the treasurer. So, um, okay, we'll go to item seven as consent agenda. Take a look at what's in front of us here. Um, again, basically school issues and contracts and supplementals and so forth. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? That would take us items, uh, up through, uh, 10. No, we're going to go, sorry, that's going to be, 12, 11, sorry. Uh, it's going to be further yet.
12-2.
12-2. Sorry, thank you. 12-2. Got 20 pages. Mr. Scott, please take real call.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Ms. Lado, Larry Mera?
Yes.
Mrs. Jubank?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes. Motion carries. Board discussion, I have one item to bring up. I'm gonna pass this around. You can check it off, read it. But again, it's, uh, from Akron Public Schools and it's a letter addressed to the board president of Perrysburg Board of Education and it's writing a letter on behalf of superintendent, Mr. Hostler and his work that he had on the, uh, fair schools funding plan. So I will pass this out to you. And again, it's a complimentary type letter for, uh, the community and the board for allowing Tom to do the work that he did in the last three years to make the difference in this, in the state of Ohio and to make a difference in our community. So I'll pass that, Sue, to you first and throughout the night, uh, you can pass it along and check it off. Anybody else have any items for discussion you'd like to bring up at this time?
I, I have just one quick thing to say. Um, we have a packet about social emotional learning. I called OSBA and, um, they've been working, there, this is, there's a whole timeline that I can send you as to how social emotional learning became involved in curriculum. It, on, in 2019, the state of Ohio, the legislature approved learning standards for social emotional learning. So, and I can, I'll send you that link and I'll send you the actual standards. Uh, this is a required thing that according to the higher revised code, you must do. So we are in the process of getting a good start on it and, uh, there's some, some literature and you might be getting some letters about it. So just be aware it is a required.
Why would this district do anything that's not required by the state? If they require it, we have to follow suit, correct?
That's right.
Okay. I mean, I don't understand some of the comments that I'm hearing occasionally about we're doing this, but yet, why would this district do that? I, I don't, you know, for me to understand that conversation, it's hard for me to understand, but we're following the standards.
I thought it was, I thought it was optional as to whether your district applies and uses that.
Well, no, it, it, there are standards that your teachers are to use.
Oh, okay. But as a district, it's optional if we use it in our curriculum. That's how I understood it from, um, Sue, help me. You ran for the, the Ohio School Board Association? Yeah. Um, what's her first name?
Kirsten Hill.
Kirsten Hill. According to her, it's optional.
I thought standards were standards.
No, I think you can, you can choose which standards you follow.
No.
No.
No. The, the standards that are set by the state of Ohio, we have to follow. How we fulfill those standards is largely up to the local district, not always, but largely left up, up to the district. But the standards and all the little fingerlings that come down from the standards, they got the benchmark and then all the little thingies underneath it, those we do have to follow. Those are our guides. That's our roadmap of what we have to present.
I'll have to follow up with her because she said in an email to me that it was optional for your district.
In your meetings with TNL, that's, that's come up a lot. What have you guys discussed in TNL?
Well, I missed the last meeting, but since then I've got this email that I, I, I don't know. I, I haven't, I haven't brought it up.
With this particular program, yes, that, the program we are, all right, this is how something becomes part of our curriculum. Uh, the teachers meet, they look over materials, they select something that they would like to try out for a year. Woodland is trying out this program for a year. After they try it out, then they meet with all the other buildings. They discuss it, the goods, the bads, the ins and the outs. Then it goes to the curriculum committee. The curriculum committee learns about it. Then it goes to the board and the board either votes to adopt that particular text or to not, uh, adopt it. Uh, but that, that is the standard procedure for adopting a textbook for a curriculum or for a, to meet a standard.
So I think where some of the confusion is, is the, this program that they're looking at at Woodland, is that fulfilling a standard or is the curriculum that they're looking at required? I mean, which one is required? The standard that an SEL?
Yes, the standard that, that we, that gives us the, all the standards for each grade level that the teachers should do. And then the curriculum that they use to accomplish that goal is what's optional.
Okay, so that's the.
And that's what, um, Woodland is, the, the staff there has chosen to, I, I, I want to say pioneer, but that's not it.
Pilot, pilot.
It was so close. Uh, anyway.
But the, the standard is the SEL, right?
So Woodland has chosen to pilot, pilot this particular thing.
So the standard is the, the social emotional learning?
Yeah.
And this pilot program is one way that the district could possibly use to do it? So we're in the first stage of that whole approval thing?
Yes, of that adoption.
Okay.
And then we as a board get to review it after the year and decide if we're implementing it?
I'll go to teaching, it'll go to Chris, to, uh, teaching and learning.
Okay.
Which you're, you have, because it's important for you and Gretchen to come back. We can get the notes, we can go through the notes, but to have that conversation face to face with the curriculum director and the building principals is so valuable. So that's why we have board members on the committee. So it's going to be very critical that you attend and, and report back, just like Gretchen, you provide information. I can read too. I've got the notes in front of us here, but that one-on-one with Brent's valuable. Anybody else? Any other discussion? Okay, at this time, as, uh, we have public participation again, and we'd like to invite any member of the audience to step to a microphone when I call you to do so, comments about items of interest or concern that did not appear on the agenda this evening. Please begin by stating your name and address. It'll be appreciated if you limit your comments to two minutes. We want to keep the meeting moving. Of course, we have an executive session on the things that the board will have to do yet this evening. We ask that you remember that Ohio law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. Be aware again that we will not respond to you at this time, but Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Hostler Superintendent or myself as board president or any board member can get back to you at that time. Um, I do have a list here first and I would like to call out resident of Perrysburg, Lori Refert.
Thank you. Lori Refert, 720 Streamview Drive. I am here to actually thank you. I'm here to thank the board, um, helping us to create a legacy, uh, format, formulated on one of the seven, actually three of the seven court commitments. I'm here to tell you a little story. As you know, I spoke at last month's board meeting and I'm very open about my son Lucas and about his, um, special needs and about how he and students like him should be included in a community. So our little story, we moved to Perrysburg, our little family of five established in 1997, moved to Perrysburg in July of 2003. We celebrated our 18 years in our house in the same neighborhood, um, with our same families around us. Lucas was diagnosed a mere 15 months later at 32 months old with an autism spectrum disorder. He was, uh, pretty non-verbal, is still pretty non-verbal. He is now 20, turned 20 in April. Um, I greatly appreciate as a member of a community that you have the core vision statements and your values, especially number one, that you see people as individuals. I also greatly appreciate that you have, um, enriching our community because all students. I also greatly appreciate that you have enriching our community, because all students, everybody who doesn't look like everybody else, everybody needs to be included, and they enrich a community. Also, number seven, I feel is really where this story is about. It's about being a trailblazer. So I've spoken before about Lucas and about him being an individual. So he started in Perrysburg schools when he was three. He did a lot of things that we always haven't done, and I've heard many times, "Well, we've always done it that way." And I said, "Well, guess what? Maybe it's not the way we should do it. Maybe we should look at it a different way." So working together as a team, we made some changes. He was the first student with significant needs to attend sixth-grade overnight camp, and I talk about some significant needs. We're talking about handpicking kids to go. We're talking about having to shower with nurse assistants, because he's not super-verbal. And then low and behold, in the middle of that, there was a snowstorm, and he functioned fantastically without a par coming. Also, he attended French class at Perrysburg Junior High and was very successful with the use of a smart board, even though he wasn't super-verbal. Sixth-grade band, he was the first student to really attend with paris support. He attended and scored ones all throughout OME, solo and ensemble. He was a participant in track and field, grades six through 11, and he didn't throw very far at 13 feet, but most people don't cheer for discus, but he got cheers from his friends and participants from other schools.
That is time.
Oh, okay. Well, I just want to thank you again. Because of him, we created a legacy. And just watch the Perrysburg High School marching band. And when you see those kids, it's because of you and us. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have someone signed in later, and I'd like to give him a chance to speak about masks again. Monica Connors, are you still here? Monica Connors? Okay, I just wanted to give her a chance if she was here. We do have someone who's not a resident of Perrysburg who'd like to speak, and that's Lori... I can't make out the last name. Zippity, Zapity, Zip... Sorry, I'm sorry. Could you please state where you are from then, please?
Where I'm from?
What city? Yes.
Monclova. My grandchildren come to school here.
Monclova? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so there's a radical woke ideology infiltrating America's schools. And some proof of that is when a loving father picked up his ninth-grade daughter from school and asked, "What did you learn today?", she responded, "I learned that you are a white, male, racist, misogynist oppressor." Well, that's the fruit. When that's the fruit of a day's education in the school system, then you know that there's something poison in the school system, and we just have to find it and hopefully root it out. Wouldn't you agree? So CRT, social-emotional learning, mask and vaccine mandates, these are all part of this program. I would like to read you something from this woman. A parent compared CRT to her experience growing up in Maoist China. "You are now teaching, training our children to be social justice warriors and to battle our country and our history, to loathe our country and our history," said Xi Jinping. "The communist regime used the same CRT to divide people. The only difference is they used class instead of race." And then I'd like to read you what General William Boykin, retired general, has stated. This is a quote, "The left understands that if they can intimidate the next generation into their ideology and worldview, they can cement the transformation of America. With 90% of school-aged children attending public schools, our students are a captive audience. The battle of our schools begins with exposing the radicalism of the U.S. Department of Education under the Biden administration, which is dividing a wedge between parents and school administrators with a, quote, 'notice of interpretation regarding Title IX. If schools abide by this guidance from Washington, female students will have to share bathrooms, locker rooms, and showers with biological males who identify as female, and female student athletes will have to compete against males. Additionally, administrators can feel free to keep duplicate records of transgender-identifying students on for school officials and another record for parents. The Biden attempt to rewrite Title IX is a profound and radical makeover that uses the threat of lost funding, lost funding, your taxpayer dollars, to intimidate schools." So board members, you could stop this. And also...
That is time. Thank you.
All right.
And if you could, Mr. Price? Price, could you get her address? It's not sufficiently... I know she said Monclova. Mrs. Hiss? Thanks.
Woodland students are being used as guinea pigs to... I'm sorry, Laura Hiss, 10259 Belmont Meadows Lane. "Woodland students are being used as guinea pigs to pilot a social-emotional learning program, SEL, that our district has not even reviewed. This is not acceptable. The board chairman of Castle said, 'Content is more and more of a commodity. Children will become self-directed. They can find out the dates of the Civil War without learning it from a teacher.' So the question that they are bringing to schools, who am I? How do I work with you? What is our purpose?' He placed the education of our children second to social-emotional learning. President and CEO of Castle said, 'If we don't teach them in school, a lot of children are not getting these basic life skills. Yet Mr. Hustler tells us, in a classroom of 27 students, we are typically able to do excellent work with 25 out of the 27. So why will daily lesson time be lost every day to impose this program on the 25 who are already thriving? Making this available to students not already receiving it at home is one thing; imposing it at all schools, imposing it on all at school without parent permission is another altogether.'" Education Liberty Watch said, "Good teachers have been helping their students manage emotions, feel empathy for others, and make responsible decisions. It is not acceptable for government entities to take over yet another function of the family and set norms for the attitudes, values, and beliefs of our children. Our elementary guidance counselor instructed a class to 'follow your heart.' When a student pointed out 'thou shalt not covet' from the Ten Commandments as God's direction not to follow your heart, the counselor told this child not to bring religion into the classroom, squelching this child's First Amendment rights and dishonoring their religious moral training. SEL wants the whole child, but the spiritual part cannot be separated from who they are. SEL's literature says children will analyze beliefs, mindsets, and biases. It also mentioned gendered identities as part of self-awareness. We were told the Woodland team will provide the due diligence necessary in receiving training, participating in thoughtful conversations about implementation, and then reflecting on and evaluating the curriculum. But this curriculum should have already been evaluated. There is significant evidence of indoctrination and erosion of freedom of conscience via government-established SEL norms for the attitudes, values, and beliefs of free-born American citizens that further and greatly harms parental autonomy. Karen Ephrem, MD. Thank you."
Thank you. So, Sess, we appreciate you staying the whole meeting to have the public participation. I know it was a long night for you, but appreciate you being here. At this time, we're going to take a motion to go into executive session. I don't... We do not anticipate any other type of agenda items, so it will be for the purpose of appointment and employment of a public employee. Can I have a motion to go to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions about it? All right, please, roll call, please.
Who seconded?
Second was...
Kelly.
Yeah, me.
Kelly, sorry, Kelly.
Mr. Bennington? Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Jubank?
Yes.
Mrs. Laramo?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Ray Pullman?
Yes. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned at this place, and we'll come back in session, and we'll go to executive session here.